Good morning and welcome. Our first hymn this morning is 521. "How I Praise The Precious Savior That Thy Love Lay Hold Of Me, Thou Art Saved, And Cleansed, And Built Me, That I Might Thy Channel Be." Let's stand and sing together, 521. Good morning. We are so glad to have you here this morning. Let's open with the word of prayer. Our gracious heavenly Father, we thank you again for this morning you've given to us just the opportunity to be able to be in your house. Lord, we just ask that you be with every aspect of the service this morning. The singing, the offer, the offering, the offertory, and the preaching, Lord. We ask that it'll just be used to uplift us, Lord, bring us closer to you. And when we leave today, may we say what a great and mighty God we serve in your name. Amen. You may be seated. Just want to go over a few announcements with you this morning. First of all, today kicks off our spring revival meetings. We have Brother Mike Pelletier with us. And then it's going to be today, and then Monday through Wednesday, we'll meet here at 7:00. So please, I want to encourage you to be here. Invite your friends. And I just want to encourage you, and I've said this before, don't mess with you can't replace. There is something that's going to be said here this week that would be good for you. And I know it's going to be good for me. And I just want to encourage you to the best of your ability to be here because I know it will be a blessing. We would like if you could be able to be on standby to help with the nursery this week. Because of the additional services, we will need nursery help. So if you're able to be on standby to be able to help, please let Jenny know. And we'd be very blessed to have you do that. Also, Brother Pelletier will be staying at what we call the Heritage Hilton, which is our mobile home in the back there. And if you'd like to have lunch with Brother Pelletier this week, he will be available at 1:00 PM. He is doing chapel here at the school, and he's going to be a blessing to the young people. But he does need to eat, so if you're available to take him to lunch, we'd be more than happy to do that. So just let Jenny know or reach out to us here at the church so that we can arrange that for you. And then last but not least, if you notice, there's grass growing out there, right? Finally, yay! Which means it's grown fast. Spring is here, summer's coming, and that means the grass grows, and it means the grass needs to be cut. So if you are able to do any landscape or any help with cutting of the grass, we just encourage you to email the church here at heritageantioch@gmail.com, and we can get you on that list to assist with any work you can do around the church. So with that, Josh, you come up and lead us in 522. Breathe on me, breath of God. One page over, 522. Our morning scripture reading is on the back of your bulletin, Ezekiel 37. I'll read the first verse, and then you can read the following verse. And we'll get through this whole section in Ezekiel 37. "The hand of the Lord came upon me and brought me out of the spirit, brought me out in the spirit of the Lord, and set me down in the midst of the valley; and it was full of bones. And he said to me, Son of man, can these bones live? So I answered, O Lord God, you know.
Again he said to me, prophesy to these bones, and say to them, Hold your eye bones; hear the word of the Lord.
Thus says the Lord God to these bones, Surely I will cause breath to enter into you, and you shall live.
I will place a sin use on you, and bring flesh on you; whatever you see and what breath in you, and you shall live; and you shall know that I am the Lord.
So I prophesied as I was commanded; and as I prophesied, there was a noise, and suddenly a rattling, and the bones came together, bone to bone.
And indeed the hell was seen used, and flesh came upon them, and the skin covered them all; but there was still breath in them.
Also he said to me, prophesy to the breath, prophesy, son of man, and say to the breath, thus says the Lord God, Come from the four winds, O breath, and breathe on these slain, that they may live.
So I prophesied as he commanded me, and breath came into them; and they lived, and stood upon their feet, and exuded their arms toward me.
Then he said to me, Son of man, these bones are the whole house of Israel. They indeed say, Our bones are dry, our hope is lost, and we ourselves are cut off.
Therefore prophesy and say to them, thus says the Lord God, Behold, O my people, I will open your graves, and will cause you to come up over your graves, and bring you into the land of Israel.
Then you shall know that I am the Lord, when I have opened your graves, O my people, and brought you up from your graves.
And I will put my spirit in you, and you shall live; and I will place you in your own land; and you shall know that I, the Lord, have spoken and performed it, saying to the Lord.
Amen. This is God's word. Let's turn next in our hymnals to 513, 513. Sing, speak, O Lord, as we welcome you to receive the food of your holy word, 513. As we come to the offering time, I know I say this every week, but the Lord just continues to bless, and he blesses us because of your faithfulness in this area. And I just want to encourage you to remain faithful. And in this area of your tithes and offerings, the Lord is blessing us in unique ways. Now, before we pray, I would just like to just remind that there's several ways to go about giving. You can either drop in the box in the back or put it in the offering bags that we're going to pass out here in a minute, or you can do it online. Either way, that is there for you. And then also, the offertory, if you want to follow along, is going to be our hymn 261 in the hymnal, Lamb of Glory. So if you just want to follow along while the song's playing, that is the hymn that we will be playing during the offertory. Let's pray. Our gracious heavenly Father, we thank you again for this morning that you've given to us, Lord, the opportunity that we can give to you and worship you in this way. We just ask that you'll continue blessing us, Lord. Thank you for the faithfulness of those that are giving, Lord. And just continue blessing us, and let us realize that this is what you have for us to do in your name. Amen. Our last hymn this morning before the message is 504, 504, 504. Precious Lord, take my hand, lead me on, help me stand. I am tired, I am weak, I am bored. Through the storm, through the night, lead me on to the light. Take my hand, precious Lord, lead me home. Let's stand and sing together, 504.
Let's take our bibles and let's turn this morning to Proverbs 29. And if you don't mind, let's stand together out of respect for God's word. Proverbs chapter 29, and when you find it, if you're able, just stand and we'll read the text. Very happy to be with you. It's going to be a short week, but I'm praying it'll be a helpful week, and praying it won't just be wasting your time, but that the Lord will really build you or build us all. Preachers need to be built, I need to be built, and we just build each other in the faith. We have these meetings coming up. Monday night, we were having the children sing a song. But Tuesday night, we're having the older guys, the high school, sing some songs. And we'll have some special nights. But on Tuesday, is that the night that we're doing like family and friends? Okay, is there anything on Monday, just everybody come, or we'll talk bad about you night, something like that?
Monday's academy night.
Academy night, okay. So they're having a competition between the classes on Monday? All right, we'll have a competition between the classes on Monday. The class that has the most to represent their class, I think, will get like a half a year off of school or something like that. And we'll let you know in chapel. But everybody, you know, start asking people to count for your grade, and we'll talk about it in school. It's going to be short notice, but we'll see if they can get some people out. Moms, dads, and grandparents then can represent as many kids as they have in the school, and everybody else can only represent one class. And the class that has the most will probably get like ice cream or maybe pizza or something sometime, okay? Maybe an extended lunch or something. But I know the principal, I can try to talk him into something nice, okay? All right, now, Tuesday night is going to be family and friend night. So I do want to ask you, how many of you have family that live within 50 miles of here, but they don't come to church here? Some of you, okay, good, good. We had a family night in New Jersey, and one fellow was paralyzed in his throat, couldn't even speak. He somehow communicated family night to his family. And even though he couldn't talk, he got 19 family members to family night. And the exciting thing is that nine of them got saved. I was in Arizona, we had a family night, and there was a lady who came to me and said, "Thank you for having family night. My son-in-law is an agnostic, doesn't believe you can know God, but he came for family night to do me a favor as mother-in-law, and he's in the back room getting saved." So if one person gets saved, it's worth having a family night. So that's why we do it. And if you don't have family that live around here, you can adopt family for that night. You can say, "I don't have a lot of family around here because I'm out west, and everybody else is over the east. And so you're such a good friend, I consider you part of my family. Would you come for me as an adopted family member?" And on that family night, we're going to have a gift for the one with the most guests. We'll do something, okay? And then on Wednesday night, it's going to be family on Tuesday, if we can switch that up. And then on Wednesday, let's just make it friend night. So everybody try to get a friend out for Wednesday night, okay? So you go up to somebody and you say, "Are you my friend?" They'll say, "Sure, what do you want?" And you say, "It's friend night and our revival meeting, and if you don't come for me, I'm going to look like I don't have any friends." So it's a way to invite people. And again, the whole purpose is getting people under the word of God. Well, let's go ahead and begin. We'll look at Proverbs chapter 29. I do hope that you're going to be in the meetings. If you have to work, quit your job, but be here if you can. If you can't, God knows, okay? But some of you might be thinking, "You know what? I love God, I come to church on Sunday, I'm busy, and sure I support what's going on at the church." But you may not be thinking about coming back because you get tired, or whatever it might be. I would say change your thinking on that because you don't realize how much you build other people by your presence, as well as you don't realize sometimes how God will help you. And so don't miss it if you can possibly be here and be here for these meetings, okay? All right, Proverbs 29 and verse 18. It says, "Where there is no vision, the people perish; but he that keepeth the law, happy is he." Again, "Where there is no vision, the people perish; but he that keepeth the law, happy is he." Heavenly Father, we do ask once again for your blessing, and we ask for your leadership through the entire week. We thank you, God, for this opportunity, and we pray that it'll be more than me giving speeches, that it'll be you guiding and meeting needs and building us what we need at this time. We pray for souls to be saved. We pray for parents to come to these meetings that don't go to church, that need to be saved, and that use the evening services there. And just bless us in Christ's name we pray. Amen. Thank you, and you can be seated. Many times you'll hear guest evangelists or someone like myself preach out of this passage, a missionary. And they will say, "If you don't have a vision for trying to reach unsaved people, you will not send missionaries to the mission field, and people around the world will perish and not be reached." Well, it's true that we have to have a vision for missions, but I don't believe that that's the main emphasis of this verse. But brother, I think the verse is teaching this. If you have a vision to live for God, you will. If you don't have a vision to live for God, you won't. "Where there is no vision, the people perish; but, in contrast, he that keepeth the law, happy is he." So the emphasis on keeping the law is basically saying, if you have a vision for why you will live for God and obey his word, you'll do it. But if you lose your vision, you won't. So in this passage, I believe it's talking more about a vision to live for God than even soul winning. And sometimes we lose our vision. In Belton, Pennsylvania, I ran across a street fighter named Dane, and Dane had been in 73 fights, and had only lost three because he was fought dirty against. And I asked Dane if he would like to get saved, and he said, "Get saved? That's a joke. I've dated too many Christian school girls to want to get saved." Now, the girls were no different than anybody who didn't even claim to be a Christian. And he said, "What a joke, because they're just as loose and not any different than anybody else that I've ever dated." Now, those girls did not think about how their life was truly, in reality, affecting somebody else's soul. And so they were not keeping the law, they were not motivated by that fact. Years ago, Bob Jones University had a basketball tournament, and they had young people from Christian schools like yours, and they had about 300. And they asked, "How many of you feel that God wants you to be in the school of religion, study to be a preacher? Out of 350 that were there, only one had an interest in the school of religion." And it was a young lady, and she wanted to go to the mission field. Now, I know that God doesn't call 350 out of 350 teenagers to be missionaries, but he certainly calls more than our responding. And we were talking about the lack of preachers. You're having a hard time getting preacher here. We just don't have enough of them. And why? It's because we kind of lost the motivation to put our lives into serving God. In my youth group back home, a deacon's son, he graduated from the Christian school, but when he got out of high school, he got to going to parties, to clubs, and he got to drinking. And I said, "Dale, you're a deacon's son, and you grew up and graduated from this school. Why are you drinking?" And he said, "Mike, the Bible says there's pleasure in sin for a season, right?" I said, "Yes, why?" He said, "I'm going to live my season." Now, I think somewhere we've lost our motivation. And so I think we start this week in meetings by just looking at some very important reasons we want to live for God, reminding us. And our first reason that we do want to live for God is a very simple outline, but it is because of Jesus. And that is the main reason that we want to live for God. If you will, turn your bibles to Amos chapter 8. And while you turn to Amos 8, I will read to you Psalm 97 and verse 10. So you find Amos 8:11. I'll quickly read Psalm 97:10. It says, "Ye that love the Lord hate evil." Ye that love the Lord hate evil. Now, there's a principle from this verse, and it is simply, love increases hate. Love increases hate. Now, when I say love increases hate, how many of you say, "I know what you're talking about"? How many say, "I don't even know what you're talking about"? Okay, let me explain. When you love somebody, you hate the things that hurt them. Or when you love somebody, you hate the things that keep you from that person. When I was first interested in... When I was first interested in dating my wife Becky, at the time, she was dating another guy, I didn't know him, but I hated him. Now, the more you love, the more you can hate. The more I loved my wife, the more I would hate the criminal that would try to harm her. The more I loved my kids, the less I would like a drug pusher who would try to ruin their lives. Now, the more that I love God, the more I'm going to hate. And what am I going to hate? Not people, but I'm going to hate what hurts God. And what hurts God more than anything is sin and when we sit against him. So here's Psalm ninety-seven, ten tells us a really good truth. The more that we love God, the less we're going to wanna hurt God. And so when we're tempted to do wrong, he says, ye that love the Lord, hate evil. In other words, if you love God, you don't want to do things that would hurt him. Now, we see the Bible verses like John twenty-one. Jesus said, Peter, lovest thou me more than these? He said, yea, Lord, thou knowest that I love thee. He saith unto him, feed my sheep. Then he said the second time, do you love me? He said, yes, and feed my lambs. And the third time, lovest thou me? He says, yea, Lord, thou knowest all things, thou knowest that I love thee. And you remember, he saith unto him, feed my sheep. So three times he said, if you love me, serve me. If you don't want me to crack you over the head, serve me. No, if you love me, serve me. Now then there's another passage, first John four twenty. If any man say, I love God and hate his brother, he is a liar, okay? Now I can say that I love God, but then if I don't love you, then I'm lying. You can say that you love God, but if you don't love him or you don't love her in your church, you're a liar. If any man say, I love God and hate his brother, he is a liar. And he said, by this shall all men know that ye are my disciples, if ye have loved one to another. So we're not really following God if we're not loving each other. Now, all of these things, they stem from we love him. So we stay out of sin. We love him, so we serve him and we love him, so we love each other because we love him. Now, the more you love, the more you hate. The more you love God, the more you're gonna hate the things that hurt him or doing things that would hurt him, like not serving him, like not loving the brother in. It would hurt God if we don't do that. So what we have to do is we have to fall in love with God again and stay in love with God and we'll do the things that we need to do. All right, now if you've been looking at Amos eight and verse eleven for a little bit, let's go ahead and read it. It says, behold, the days come, saith the Lord, that I will send a famine in the land. Not a famine of bread, nor thirst for water, but of hearing the word of the Lord. Now, when you think of a famine, you think of lack of food or lack of water. Now this famine is a lack of a spiritual thing. It is not a lack of preaching, you've got preaching that does go on, whether it might be a pastor or not, you're getting preaching. But the lack is of hearing the word of the Lord. Now, when you look at this, there are two ways you can hear something. Number one, you can hear it in your head or you can hear it in your heart. On the bottom of the cigarette court, carton says, warning surgeon general says smoking causes what? Cancer. Now, we all believe that smoking causes cancer, but I use the illustration, we believe it, but we don't believe it. If everyone believed that smoking causes cancer, it would change their behavior and they wouldn't walk around with a cigarette in their mouth. Because nobody wants to get lung cancer. Now, a hard belief that smoking causes cancer will change your behavior. Now, I'm not um, preaching against smoking, though I am, but what the point is, a heart really changed your behavior. Now, we love him because he first loved us. We've heard about Calvary since we were little kids, but what I wanna do is talk about Calvary again, but I wanna do it in a different way. I want us to hear it in our heart, not in our head. There's a famine of hearing the word of the Lord. We hear it, but we don't hear it. And so what we wanna do is hear it in our heart, not in our head, what Jesus did for us and we'll fall back in love with him. All right, turn back to Mark fifteen and in Mark fifteen, we have the crucifixion of Jesus. But hear it in your heart and ask God to help you to feel it again. All right, Mark fifteen, beginning at verse fifteen. And so pile it, willing to contend the people. Release parabas unto them and deliver Jesus when he had scourged him to be crucified. And the soldiers led him away to the hall called praetorium and they called together the whole band. And they clothed him with purple and plaited a crown of thorns and put it about his head and began to salute him, hail king of the Jews. And they smote him on the head with a reed and did spit upon him and bowing their knees worshiped him. Now, if I was to ask you what Jesus did for you, you could tell me he died on a cross. But do you think about the details of it? And now first, imagine yourself being God. You're in heaven and you're surrounded by the beauty of heaven and then leave heaven and come to this place, earth. Now, how many of you, when you get to heaven, are going to wanna come back to earth? Not me, how about you? Now then, that was a sacrifice right there and then he took on the form of a man. Now, when Jesus became a man, did he stop being God? Or was he still God? Still God, but he limited himself to human body. Now that would be like you and I, maybe finding somebody paralyzed from the neck down and trading bodies with him. So he limited himself to human body for thirty-three years. One time, I was witnessing to a lady and she couldn't understand how Jesus could die on the cross and stay just like that, how could it be so simple? And I said to her, Jesus didn't just die on the cross in that moment to take care of our sins. He was here on earth for thirty-three years. And it took him thirty-three years to make the payment for our sin. And at the end, he died and he rose from the dead. But if we can think in our heart, he did this, that is a sacrifice, that's a reason that we wanna live for him. Not just hear it in our head, but feel it and hear it in our heart. And we've got something to do with whether we get it in the heart or whether we just regurgitate the allergy. Today is twenty-twenty-three A.D. Basically after death. Whose death? Christ's death. It happened. Now then, the Bible says that Jesus went about doing good. He fed the hungry, healed the sick, raised the dead, and you would've thought people would've loved him, but then they hated him. Have you ever done something good for somebody that they backstab you? This is what we did to crimes. Then we crucified him and before we crucified him, it wasn't exactly a Sunday School picnic. Now, the first thing we did was we scourged him. Scourging refers to being a man with a cat of nine tails, a cat of nine tails. That's a handle with nine leather strips and on the end of those leather strips are tie piece to three or four inch long sharp rock bone and metal. I remind us. They would take a man and tie him, spreading him in the air through four rings. Sometimes one ring dangling from a tree, other times they'd bend his body over a rack and tie his wrist to his ankles. And once the criminal was secured, they would take the cat of nine tails and they pull it back and with a Marty arm, they would lash it across his back and they would snap it. And when they would snap it, the leather would snap and shoot the bone rocket and metal right into a man's skin. Not trying to be needlessly grotesque, but purposely grotesque. We need to hear it because this is how it was. It got into his flesh, then they jerked it and it would take off nine traps of flesh. Now usually, they would beat a man thirteen times from the left side and then thirteen times from the right side and then thirteen times down the center to do a thorough job. And so they would rip flesh this way, this way and this way. And after being beaten with the cat of nine tails, his back would look like hamburger meat. We have to hear that again in our heart. Now, then it says, they plaited a crown of thorns. If you go to Israel, the thorns are not little, I've been there two times, they're like six inches long. Very sharp and strong. So they made it into a circle, put it on his head and they beat him on the head with a rock. And that would of course drive it right down under his skin, up against the bone, go down behind his skin, behind his skin, the thorns would be there. Excruciating, I know. Pain, I know, and the blood would come down. Even beating him on the head with the stick was something, but to drive it into his skull. Now then, they clothed him with purple, how long was that robe on his back? We don't know, but maybe it had time to dry and if it would've dried, that scab would've dried right into the robe and when they all crucified Jesus, they ripped off that robe, they would've reopened all those wounds. Now, turn your Bibles over to Psalm twenty-two, it is a prophecy of the crucifixion. And Psalm twenty-two, verse fourteen. Happened a thousand years, it was written a thousand years before it happened and if I did not believe the Bible, I would believe the Bible if for no other reason because of fulfilled prophecies. If I was a young man or a young lady or somebody who's been in church for a long time and the devil started putting thoughts in my head, how do I know I'm not in some kind of occult? How do I know I'm not being brainwashed? I would look at Bible prophecy and I've done this myself, it proves to me that the Bible's gotta be God's word. All right, for instance, look at verse eighteen. They part my garments among them and cast lots upon my vesture. And that's what they did to Jesus a thousand years later after piercing his bones. So it happened, just like it was prophesied. For instance, look at Psalm twenty-two and verse one, the devil makes you wonder, are we believing the right thing? Are we in some kind of occult? Are we just believing what mama taught us? All right, Psalm twenty-two and verse one, he says, my God, my God, why hast thou forsaken me? Now where we heard those words stated? Jesus on the cross. So this is definitely a messianic prophecy, so it's definitely talking about Jesus. Now look at verse twenty, verse fourteen. Hear Christ, back ripped off the cat of nine tails, crown of thorns on the head, hear it in your head, no big deal. Hear it in your heart, it does something to you. Now verse fourteen, I am poured out like water, all my bones are out of joint. Now why would Christ say, I am poured out like water? If you put water in a bowl, it'll take the shape of a bowl. If you put it in a square box, that water will take the form of a square. Why? Water has no form and it goes into whatever you pour it into. Now, the form of a man's body is his bones. If he had no bones or they were out of socket or joint, you'd be like water with a different shape, no form. All right, so why does God say we're poured out like water? Look at verse fourteen, I, Jesus said, I am poured out like water, none of us, but he was. Why? All my bones are out of joints. All my bones are out of joint. Now, I didn't know this until I was preparing this particular message. Evidently, when they crucified Jesus, they pulled his bones out of joint. Before they did it, I didn't know that. Now, there used to be a torture in Bible days, they would tie a man's body into two different large animals, they would hit them, they'd go in opposite directions and pull the bones out of joint. Some people think that Roman soldiers ground this arm, this arm, this leg, this leg and pull until they pulled their bones, his bones out of their socket, out of joint. Others think that when they nailed Jesus to the cross and dropped the cross into the hole that held the cross up, the cross beam being like two hundred and some pounds, the cross bar, the long part being even heavier, dropping six feet or whatever it had to, when it hit with that thud, it jerked his shoulders out of joint. I don't know. When he says, all my bones are out of joint, doesn't mean every finger, I doubt it. But he's basically in so much pain with so many bones out of joint that he's hanging on the cross with bones literally out of joint. And imagine the excruciating pain as he would have to hold himself up with bones out of joint. Or else rip the nails right through his hands or have that shooting through him. Now verse fifteen. My strength is dried up like a potsher, my tongue cleaves to my jaws. We're reminding ourselves of what Jesus did, he was so thirsty, his tongue literally stuck to the roof of his mouth. And what did they give him to drink? Vinegar. Verse sixteen halfway through, they pierced my hands and my feet. That's the nails through the hand, through the foot. But just so that we can try to get it back in the heart, we want to. I remember about a year ago, I was actually in California. I was up in Oroville and I was thinking, I'm drying up a little bit, God, I need to keep fresh. And so I was saying, through the crucifixion, talking to God about it. And then I got to the nailing his hands to the wood and I got to thinking, Lord, that should affect me, but it's not affecting me. It should affect me. So I prayed, Lord, how can I get this in my heart again? And before long, I was saying, God, thank you for taking the nails. God, thank you for taking the nails. And I found myself warmed again. Now just imagine this, if some men were to come and they were to pull me and they were to take my arm and hold it down and somebody else, two men, hold my arm down and somebody else would take a nail and a, and a mallet and they were to stick it right here, probably below my wrist and they would start pounding and pounding and pounding and it would go right through my arm or my hand and secure my hand to the wood. Wouldn't that affect you to have to see that? Now, I'm not saying that you people don't care like you should. I'm saying none of us do like we could. And we have at least to do something, we've got to get this in our heart again, okay? And he took the other hand and they took a mallet and they took a nail and they beat it right down into the wood and secured it. So he literally could not pull his hands off the wood, crossing his feet. Put a spike right through the foot, right through the second foot, literally securing it to the wood. Hear it in your heart, the best that you can. Now, turn in your Bibles over to Isaiah fifty-two and it kinda sums up the crucifixion of Jesus. Isaiah fifty-two and verse fourteen. As many as were astonished at thee. Astonied beams amazed beyond comprehension, as many as were just amazed as they saw him. Why? His visage, meaning his face, was so marred more than any man and his form more than the sons of men. Now basically, what that is saying is after Jesus, his beard was ripped out, after they plummeted him in the face. Who hates you, Jesus? After they spit in his face. And all this spit and all this blood, all this swelling, all of this torn flesh. As they looked at his face, he did not look human. That's basically what it's saying. And his form, more than the sons of men, meaning that his bones were out of joint, he didn't look like a human being. Now, here's what we're reminding ourselves of, okay? And see if you agree with me. Why was Christ's back ripped off with a cat of nine tails? Why did he let them put nails in his hand and his feet and he could've stopped them? Do we agree he could've stopped them? People tried to kill our Savior and sometimes when we say that, we might feel a little like, when I was younger, I used to feel a little weird saying that, like just religious talk, but it's not. Our Savior. Our Lord. He really is. If any of us are saved, it's because of him, so he is our Lord. Now, why did our Savior let them put nails in his hands? Two times they tried to kill him and he just walked away from them, they couldn't kill him. As I mentioned, he could've called a legion of angels and one angel in the Old Testament with a donkey's bone killed a hundred and eighty-five thousand Assyrians. What could ten thousand angels have done? So nobody took his life, he let them. So nobody took his life. He let them spit in him, let them put nails in him, let them pull his bones out of joint, let them mar his face and not even look like a human being. And why did it happen in Isaiah 52, 14? Because of Isaiah 53. And we wanna remember this, because of Isaiah 53. Remember it, verse 5. "He was wounded for what?" "Our transgressions." "He was bruised for our iniquities." "And the chastisement of our peace, or the punishment that we should have had in hell, was on him, and with his stripes we are healed." So somebody says, "Jesus didn't do enough for me to give up my Sundays." Or "Jesus didn't do enough for me to give up my cigarettes." So "Jesus didn't do enough for me to pave meteum." That's just manipulation. No, it's not just manipulation. It's God's work. "Jesus didn't do enough for me to do whatever it might be." And I say, "What more could He have done?" And I'm reminding us. "Greater love hath no man than this, and a man lay down his life for his friend." Christ did love us. He does love us. He did die for us, and He did save us. And you can't love anybody anymore. And if we loved Him, then here's an opportunity to say, "God, see, I really do love you. I love you more than I love that TV show. I'm gonna go to church. God, I do love you more than I love the Super Bowl. I'm gonna go to church. God, I really do love you more than I love money. I'm gonna go and give you this tit, because it's yours anyway, and everything I have is yours. I remember that. And Lord, I really do love you enough that I'm going to serve you, just because I love you, not because I'm trying to impress people. And all of these things will work if we have the motivation, okay? It took a long time for that, but we love Him, and that's our motivation. Do you agree with me that that's a pretty good motivation? Now, the first reason we get our fire back is He loved us. He loved us. He loved us. And if for no other reason, that's why we serve Him. We don't quit. We serve Him, because we love Him. We love Him. We love Him, and that is the reason. Every time we're tempted to do wrong, we can say, "Here's an opportunity. I can show God I do love Him. God, I really do love you. See, I'm not gonna do this thing that you don't want me to do, because I love you." Now the other two points are gonna be a little bit shorter than the first. But the second reason is because of you. First, you wanna serve God because you love Jesus. Second reason is because you want a better life than you would have if you were in a life of sin. Now here's Proverbs 28 and verse 14. Let's look at this one. Proverbs 28 and verse 14. Again, we're talking simply this morning about getting a vision, getting a motivation. Why we want to live for God again. Get that fire back up. Part of revival, I think, is falling in love with God again. But part of revival is getting that motivation again. And I may not be the smartest guy, but I can maybe help with motivation. All right, Proverbs 28 and verse 14. "Happy is the man that feareth always; but he that hardeneth his heart shall fall into mischief." Happy is the man that feareth always, the man that fears God. Happy is that man, but he that hardeneth his heart, "I'm not gonna do this. I'm not gonna do this. I'm not gonna give up that. I'm gonna do what I wanna do in any particular area. No, I won't do it. I'm not gonna get stuck in that church stuff. I'll go this far. That's it." That's where a lot of Christians are. Now, "he that hardeneth his heart shall fall into mischief." All right, now, the first thing we have is we have happiness. Now happy is a man, and that's the positive. Now the three things people want in life more than anything would be love, joy, and peace. Why do people get drunk? They call it happy hour. Why do people have affairs? Why do people love? Why do people take drugs? Forget their problems. Have a little peace. Happy is the man that feareth God, not the one who goes to the drugs, the drinking, any morality. Now, you get apples from an apple tree, you get oranges from an orange tree. Love, joy, and peace comes from God's truth. And whenever I lead someone to the Lord, and last week I got to lead some to the Lord, I love to look at them and just see their face. One guy last week, I said, "How do you feel?" He said, "Really good. Really good." I led a 68-year-old lady to the Lord. She said, "I've got peace." I led a 19-year-old teenager to the Lord. He said, "This is better than any high I've ever had." Now, it's like a law of gravity. What goes up must come down. You throw your life up to God in full surrender, and it comes down with happiness. It just happens. You may not be able to explain it, but it does happen. And you and I have all experienced that when we got saved, we got that happiness. Do you remember that? Now, when we walk with God, we continue to have that peace, continue to get that love, and continue to have that joy. So basically, holiness is not negative, it's positive. Now many people think that all Christianity is, is don't listen to the wrong music, don't watch the wrong TV, don't watch the wrong YouTube, don't watch wrong videos. Don, don, don. And then a preacher like me comes along and says, "Don't even drink beer." And somebody says, "Oh, not another legalist." Listen, holiness isn't negative, it's positive. If one man's walking this way, and another man's walking that way, can you walk with them both at the same time? God's going this way, world's going this way. That's why he says friendship with the world is empty with God. No man can serve two masters. They'll love the one, hate the other, hold the one, despise the other. But you cannot serve God and Mammon. And so we have the awesome privilege of choosing who we're gonna walk with. But we can't walk with them both. Now, somebody takes the path of sin, there's pleasure in sin for a what? Season. And summer's not here very long, then comes the payday. Somebody goes has this beer party. They have a great time, we think. First of all, it's an artificial happiness. If you gotta pay to be happy, it's not real. And then they wake up with a hangover, they wake up vomiting, and it's not that great. And then you walk with God, it's not for a season. Any moment you walk with God, you will automatically, always continually have, at least in your soul, peace, love and joy. Now the negative side is that "he that hardeneth his heart shall fall into mischief." Now, I think that God is not up there with a baseball bat waiting for us to step out of line to crack us on the head. But I do know that God says He chasens whom He loves, and He also put in the Bible on purpose these words. "Ye have forgotten." "Ye have forgotten the extra station which God speaketh unto you. My son, despise not the chastening of the Lord, nor fain with thou rebuke to him, for whom the Lord loveth, he chasteneth, and scourges every son of him he receiveth." And so what he's saying is, sometimes you forget, and you think, "Well, God's not gonna see it." When He does, and then you might just feel like, "Well, God's just gonna be disappointing." Yes, but He also chasens us. And so we've gotta have the fear of God too. The negative side is if we do sin, we fall into mischief. Now I know that I could do certain things and probably never get caught by man. I always know I would be caught by God. And I still have enough old-fashioned fear of God, because the Bible says I should, that I don't want to do anything, first to break my fellowship with God, because I love Him and I want Him, but I also don't wanna do anything to bring the judgment of God on me. Now, the secret sins are not secret sins. "There before the eyes of the Lord are in every place beholding the evil and the good." So God sees the good, don't forget that. God does see when we do good. But God also sees when we do not and when we sin. Now, when I was a boy, my mom would just have to look at me a certain way, and I knew I better straighten up. If that didn't work, she would call my name, "Mike." If that didn't work, she'd call my middle name. You know how that goes. "Michael Andrew." If that didn't work, there was bloodshed in the woodshed. And if that didn't work, my parents would come down even harder. I remember my brother one time. I got a spanking. I had a bad attitude still. I was still cocky. And I went upstairs and I said, "Didn't hurt." Paul being the good brother he was, went down and said, "Hey Dad, Mike said that didn't hurt." So Dad said, "Hmm." And he said, "Mike, come here." So I went down and he said, "Yeah, so Paul said that didn't hurt, huh?" And I knew I was in trouble. He said, "Get back in the bedroom. I'm gonna make this one hurt and that one hurt." And I learned my lesson. Now my dad and my mom were pretty good disciplinarians. They never spanked any harder than they had to, but they always spanked as hard as they had to. And that's the way God is. He's not just going to get us, but He is going to love us and spank as hard as He has to to keep us from straying and staying away. First thing He'll do is take your joy away. Some of you might be on step one of God's judgment. Something you knew you shouldn't do, you've done it, you don't care, you're gonna do it. So God's making you feel guilty, so stop, fix it. If that doesn't work, He may come down harder. He may bring you a car wreck. Sometimes car wrecks are God's judgment. Sometimes God, women are driving cars, and that's why we have car wrecks, women drivers. No. But then if that doesn't work, He comes down a little harder. He may bring some financial problems. Sometimes He's building us, sometimes He's disciplining us, but He knows what to do. How many remember that guy? I don't think I even told you. There's a guy. Yeah, I did. I told you about, he was drinking all the time. He says, "There's pleasure in sin for a season." He went to a beer party. This is a true story. Dale got drunk. Afterwards, he got into a fight. And he got messed up very badly. Three guys came to him afterwards and said to him, "Do you want revenge on the guy who beat you up?" He said, "Sure. What do we do?" They took him over to the car, and in the back of their car were three rifles. True story. So Dale got in the car. My friend drove over to the house of the guy that beat him up, and they said, "Dale, you get out, knock on the door, and we'll blow holes in his house." Dale said, "That'll get him." So Dale got out, was gonna knock on the door, and those three guys had set him up. They were friends of the guy who had beat him up. And he took him to an abandoned mobile home and not to the guy's house. So Dale's still drunk, and he walks out, is gonna get revenge on this guy. They pulled out the rifles, and instead of aiming at the house, aimed them at Dale's back. They pulled the trigger, hit the target, and Dale dropped. That happened. Now God was trying to get a hold of Dale. You say, "How do you know it was God?" Here's how I know. Dale lived. Now you don't lift your three rifle holes in your back unless that's God. Does that make sense? Now my preacher went to visit him and said, "Dale, are you ready to get right with God?" And I wasn't there in the room, but I was later told that Dale laughed in my preacher's face. And somebody says, "Man, if God tried to get a hold of me that way, I wouldn't laugh." But yet they laugh, but God does try to get a hold of them. Now some of you might be on a step one of God's judgment, step two. But I'm saying, don't laugh at the idea that God sees your sin and that God judges sin, because He still does, okay? So we wanna live for God because we love Jesus, because He first loved us. And it's, we want to live for God because we want happiness, love, joy, and peace. How many feel good when you're walking with God and feel bad when you're not? Okay, me too. And I also want us to understand that God is not messing around. Not only does He bless us when we do live for Him, but I still fear God enough. And the fear of God is the beginning of wisdom, that I do not wanna do something that His I see, and He sees everything. I don't wanna do something that would make me a candidate for the judgment of God. I want the blessing of God, not the judgment of God. Amen? Now, the last thing, if for no other reason, why do we wanna live for God? It's because of them, and this will be very quick. What do I mean by them? Outside these four walls of this building, there really is a world where people are still dying and going to hell. And they need Christian people to live the Christian life, to be an example, and to share the gospel with them. The Bible says that hell is not a fairy tale. Psalm 9:17. "The wicked shall be turned into hell." It's gonna happen. Romans 6:23. "The wages of sin is death." Psalm Revelation 20:14. "Husab was not found written in the book of life, was cast into the lake of fire." And so we wanna live for God because of our ability to reach unsaved people. It still is to be at the forefront of our lives. I close with one illustration for out of time. In Dalton, Georgia, true story, I have had three people tell me that it happened, just like I am giving this illustration. Four teenagers went to their favorite swim hole. They had not been there in about a month. The first teenager dove into the water, swim hole in a creek somewhere. And the second teen was about to dive in when the head popped up from the first teenager, and he screamed, "Go back, go back!" and got sucked under. Realizing his friend was in danger, he put his foot in the water, was gonna help him, whatever's going on, and a head popped up splashing out of the water, "Go back!" and got sucked under. One last time, he tried to help his friend. Newspaper article said, "A head popped up with a final blood-curdling scream, I'm sure, but a final scream, 'Go back!'" Got sucked under. This time, a pool of blood came up from the water and rose to the surface. They ran to get help. They found the fire department. The fire department came. They ran some kind of a device through to pull out whatever's in there, and they pulled out the body. And they also pulled out what happened. They found what happened was that boy had dove headfirst into a nest of water moccasins. He was eaten alive. Now when I heard that awesome, awesome story, that horrible story, I realized this kid was fighting to get out, because he knew he was dead, but he didn't want his friend to be dead. He didn't want his friend to go to it. So he fought, get his head out of the water, "Go back! Don't come here. Go back!" And I got to thinking, what would happen if I could take a magic saw to his feet in front of the churches where I preach? And I guess I'm a little bit dramatic sometimes, but God gave us a mind, God gave us emotion, and God gave us a will. And I think that we gotta have a little heart in here too. I wish I had more heart when I died. But think about this. I guess that I'm a little emotional sometimes, or think about it dramatically. I began to think, what would happen if I could take a magic saw, so to speak, cut a hole in the floor, cut a hole in the earth, and cut a hole in the coffin lid to hell? Open up the lid to hell and reach down and take a hold of a man who's been burning in hell for a thousand years? And pull him out and put him behind his pulpit, let him preach. I imagine we would hear the most eloquent sermon we've ever heard. "Go back! Go back! Don't come here. Go back!" Why does it seem that we can go weeks and months, and a year, or two years, or five years, without even trying to win one person to Jesus? And we don't think about it until we're looking at people that are dead in the casket. Then it's too late. So we've gotta have the vision to why we wanna live for God. If you could keep somebody from going to hell, would you want to? And part of that is we live right, but another part is we talk, and we go after it. So if we don't have a vision, we're not gonna do these things. But if we have a vision, we'll go after the things of God. Let's bow our heads, and we'll have a big word of prayer. Now, with our heads bowed and eyes closed, I do wanna ask a couple of very important questions. And we'll ask questions each time, because this is a revival meeting. So I wanna ask, first of all, with our heads bowed, how many of you would say, "Brother Mike, I may not be everything I should be, but I do know this. I'm on my way to heaven. I settled that. I have a Bible reason why I know I'm going to go to heaven when I die." If you have a Bible reason why you know that you are born again and saved, would you slip up a hand if you're sure of it? Hold it up just a moment. Helps me to see the need. If you don't know, don't be embarrassed. It just helps me to see the need. All right? Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you. You can put your hands down. Is there anybody here this morning would say, "Brother Mike, I don't know that I'm going to heaven, but I know I want to. I'm a little confused, but I want help." Is there anybody like that? "I don't know I'm going to heaven. I hope I am, but I don't know I am, and I want help." If that's you, don't embarrass. I won't force you to do anything. I won't embarrass you. I'll just pray for you without saying even where you're sitting. So if you don't know you're gonna go to heaven and you want to, So if you don't know you're gonna go to heaven and you want to, would you be comfortable just lifting up a hand? I'll see it, you put it right back down, and I'll include you in a prayer. I do not know I'm going to go to heaven, but I want to. Okay, good. Don't be embarrassed at all. Is there anybody else like that? Don't be embarrassed at all. I don't know I'm going to heaven, but I know I don't want to go to hell. And this is a serious thing. Anybody else along with this one? Okay? Others of you, you look like maybe you're thinking it through, and if you're not really sure, don't you be embarrassed. I'm not looking at anybody because I'm for you, not against you. I don't want you to feel intimidated. But if you don't know you're going to heaven, you're not stupid. You just don't know, that's all. And when you can find what the Bible says will be the way to be sure you're going to heaven, you'll be very glad you got that settled, so your fear is gone. So if anybody else like that, we are here to help you, okay? Now, how many of you would say, Brother Mike, I needed this message. I know I'm going to heaven, but I haven't been serving God like I need to. I know it's kind of general, but I haven't been serving God like I need to, and it's time to get back to serving God. Because I love God enough, I want to do what God wants me to do again. Would you slip up a hand more before God than me? God bless you there, God bless you here, there, here, there, here, there. Good, good. Amen. Good. Anybody else? I love God enough, I want to get my life straightened out, or get more fired up and serving God again. Amen. Father, I pray now that you have blessed in this invitation time. I pray, Lord, that we'd be able to help. I pray for this one. I said, I want to go to heaven. I hope I'm going to heaven, but I'm not sure I'm going to heaven. That I would be able to help this one today. Understand that you say we can know we're gonna go to heaven on the authority of the Bible, and what it says will get us there. I pray for any others who are not sure they're going to heaven, but didn't raise their hand, that they wouldn't feel intimidated, but that they would talk to me before the end of the week, man, woman, boy, or girl, so I could help them with this. That's why I'm here. And then, Lord, for many have raised their hand, saying they need to get that motivation back. They see why they want to live for God. Help them to hear in their heart, not just their head, what is true. You died for us. And you give us love, joy, peace, chastisement as well. And Lord, we need to look for you because of others who are on their way to hell that need us, someone to stand between them in going to hell. Now, with our heads bowed, I'm gonna ask that our pianist come. I know if we can have the pianist come, and she'll play a stanza of Just As I Am, or I Surrender All, whichever one you would like to. And you that raised your hand, and you said, I'm not really sure I'm gonna go to heaven. I think I am, but I've got doubts. We'd like to help you if I can. And I don't know if, if, if we had a brother, Logan, do you want to do that? Would you just stand at the back door? And if you want to make sure that you're gonna go to heaven, the only way we can help you is if you let us. And even if you are going to heaven, but you've got doubts, it doesn't matter. You really need to get some help from the Bible to see why you can be sure, and if you are going to heaven. And so I invite you, we do not force, we invite. And I invite any of you others, we do not force, we invite. If you're a woman, well, the woman go to deal with you. And if you just slip to the back door a little bit, that, Brother Logan, Logan will help you. And then others of you, you need to pray about something, give something right with God. I invite you, come to the front and pray about it, or you will pray about it where you're sitting. Well, let's all stand to our feet, and then we'll have this invitation time. So I'm gonna have her play through the stanza. You go to the back, or you come forward and pray where you're at. Need help to make sure of your salvation. Swallow heart, slipping out, go to the back, heads are bowed, eyes are closed, so if you're going right. Heads are bowed, eyes are closed, if you want help to make sure of your salvation. God, I love you enough. I'm gonna stop doing this spanking. Start me in what I should. Pray to God about it where you're standing. Play through the chorus one more time. Amen. Thank you. Now, with our heads bowed, I do have just a question. That will determine the kind of meeting we're gonna have, two quick questions. No pressure on you, but how many would say, Brother Mike, I'd be willing to pray every day, this week, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, for things I'd like to see God do in this revival meeting, in my life, in my family, and maybe in unsaved people's lives? If you'd be willing to at least pray for five minutes about the meeting, if God will remind you, would you slip up a hand? Good, good, great. And how many of you, no pressure, would say, I'll try to at least invite maybe two people that have a spiritual need. If they don't come, they don't come. But I'll try to invite at least two people, and I can think of that, I know need spiritually some things. Good, good, good. I think we're gonna have a great meeting. Heavenly Father, thank you for what you've already begun to do. And Lord, thank you for speaking to our hearts today. I pray, Lord, that you keep me real, that you keep us all real. Help us to see what you've done for us and to appreciate it. Help it to affect our heart. In Christ's name we pray. Amen. See you tomorrow if you can come. Lord will.